January 13th, we'll be holding a snowball dance for CES students from pre-K to 4th grade at the CMS cafeteria. Geez, I can't get it straight. And we are working on a bingo event in the spring, one for adults and one for kids.
Great. Awesome.
Aren't you next, Rob?
Yeah. So we had to cancel our January meeting due to scheduling conflicts on the board for January. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 7th at 6:30 in the CES library. We will be having the BCBA from CMS, Stacy Laback, come and talk to us what the BCBA looks like in the CMS school. So we just want to have like, kind of like a rough idea what happens in 5th grade, what happens in 6th grade, 7th and 8th, and then we're going to have it open to questions and answers from the parents. And she is happy to come to our meeting. In March, on the 7th, we'll be holding our Basic Rights Meeting. I still need to reach out to Loretta to see if she could lead the meeting. She's been doing this the last few years, and it's worked out. I don't know if maybe we should be doing something like that on Zoom. We seem to have like better participation than in person, so that might be something that we do offer, and I'll keep you updated on that. And then our April 4th meeting, we're going to be getting our members ready for their IEPs and 504 plans with questions and suggestions that they need at that time, and we will still be breaking down the IEP during our parent support time after each of our meetings from this point forward. And I do not have anything scheduled for our May or June meeting as of yet, but I'm looking for some input from our families that are in need. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for all your hard work.
All right, Dr. Meyer.
All right, thank you. We have a few staffing updates that are noted in your packet here. Michelle Gray was a CES IA. She's transferring to the middle school to be the Guidance Administrative Assistance, Administration Assistant to replace Kelly Van Ass for her retirement. We have two new hires, Sarah Phillips and William Flumerfelt, both new IAs that are joining us. They both joined, I think Sarah was right before the break and then one was right after the break. And we have two leaves of absence, Christina Boudreaux and Sam Canyon, both will be going on leave of absence later this year. Those are maternity leaves, so we don't need to approve them. They're within the regular protected leaves. Midyear goals update. I don't have a ton for this, it's formal stuff. I just kind of put the mission vision, core values, and the goals in here just to refresh our memory. If you remember the first one, social emotional well-being, and we're looking at trying to get more of that recognition and empowerment. So, you know, I think from a district point, you know, we've brought back the celebrations and we've been doing the recognition of staff members and, you know, students and that kind of stuff. So I think we're getting back to that. We haven't really dug into the, you know, the attendance percentages yet. We'll do that close to the end of the year. So that's, you know, in progress. Eliminating inequities among learners. The big one I'd say that we've done for this is the equity audit, and the equity audit is included in the packet, so that was conducted in the fall. We are working, one of the big things we talked about today in our administrative team meeting was a civil rights institutional self-evaluation. So a lot of what's in the equity audit, sort of looking at those disparities between, you know, whether it's graduation rates or suspension rates or things like that, that's a part of it. The other part we're really going to be focusing on is looking at participation, so looking at different clubs and classes and those types of things to see what's our actual demographic breakdown in each of those to make sure that we're not having any, you know, there's no obstacles or things that are prohibiting students from accessing those programs. And we're also going to be doing some learning walks with an equity focus as we go forward. Special education program review is in progress. It's the same company that's doing the equity audit was doing it for us, and I know she's been working on it. It's primarily being done by the same person. It's our lead professional development person, so they've been working on that. And then the lag measure, one of the lag measures is district-wide instructional handbook. I know we're definitely going to be working on an elementary instructional handbook pretty soon. That was one of the things that we put in for with the turnaround grant for the elementary school, because even though we came off the list this year, we were eligible for that funding. So part of how we wrote that was to use that money to work with the consultant to get the instructional handbook created so that we can hopefully sustain the practices that we've put in place over the last few years at that level. And the multi-tiered system of support, I think that, you know, continues to be what we are, you know, working on as overarching goal, you know, strengthening our Tier One curriculum, implementing universal design for learning practices, and trying to get our, you know, our, I'm trying to think of the right word here, interventions. Thank you. That's me. The interventions in place to support the Tier One growth. So we have done, you know, those things, assessment calendars, data teams, win schedules, those are all in place. I know the elementary school, I think, is doing their mid-year benchmarking right about now and already. And one of the things we talked about is our February 3rd half-day, be used for a variety of things, but one of the things will be also looking at some of that data and also looking at some of that equity data. So, as I said, not a huge, the exception of the equity audit and report in here, not a huge update for you, but it's just want to refresh it and remind us what we're working towards and what we've been doing. Equity audit is in here. I don't expect that you've read every page of it. I would say one of the main, you know, there are some different recommendations as you go through, and some of them are things like for the school committee, some of them are things of revisiting certain policies. It's sort of like we got credit for some policies that have been updated recently, and there's a few that they're saying, maybe you want to look at these model policies and try to do that. So that's something we'll probably maybe start working through the policy subcommittee and kind of bring back here. Another major takeaway that I think we're going to try to want to start looking at this spring is, you know, basically coming at the end of our five-year strategic plan that we wrote. So I think this spring, I don't necessarily want to do the full strategic plan, but what I'd like to do, I think this spring is start doing the work on revising the mission statement and the vision statement again to really start, you know, refreshing that. And then what I'd like to probably do is in the fall, once we get our, see where our data is next year and our accountability data and all that, that's when I'd like to kind of build out the rest of the strategic plan. So, you know, there's a lot of information in here. I don't want to go through necessarily all of it. I mean, you guys can have it. We can, you know, certainly it's a public document, we put it in the packet. The, like I said, the big takeaway I think is, one of the big ones seem to be, overarching one, I think, seemed to be getting that district vision to really focus on what is a district's vision for equity, right? And building that into our vision statement, and then having that through line where if it's in the district vision statement, it's now in the school improvement plans and all those types of things. I'd say another overarching thing, not overarching, but another thing that stands out when you read the report is how much our population has grown, our EL population has grown. I believe it's page 42. It's, I think there's a little table at the bottom of 42 that shows in 2018, there were 161 EL students, so English learners. In 2022, there's now 284. So even though our, even though we've added ESL teachers, so we were at 5.9 teachers in 2018, we're up to nine in 2022, our ratio, our student-to-teacher ratio has actually dropped. So you'll see that probably reflected in the preliminary budget. We are looking at probably to add some more ESL positions for next year to try to look at continuing to, you know, address that trend and make sure we're providing for those students, supporting them. So I don't know if anyone has questions on the equity audit, or if there's anything else you want me to go into more detail, or you're certainly welcome to just sort of, I know you just got it Friday, so you could digest it and, you know, we could always revisit it later if there's any questions on it. Okay? All right. Thank you. Oh, and I would say, one last comment I would say overall is there were, you know, parent, student, and staff survey questions, and I think when you look at that data, for the most part, it was pretty positive, you know? I don't think that, I'm not saying that we don't have work to do, but it was just, it wasn't overly negative or anything, which I thought was good. So I think it's a fair sort of starting place for us, so it was good to see. All right. So the CMS MSBA update, so in your, after the equity audit here, it starts, you have a letter, Massachusetts School Building Authority. So this letter was from December 13th. It's been a while since we had a meeting. That just showed that there were three designers selected as finalists, and on the 20th, the school, sorry, the building committee and permanent building committee met on December 20th to finalize a contract with the number-one finalist, Lamro Pagano Associates Architects. So they are officially on board. I've been having some meetings with them and Dorn Woody, our OPM, sort of offline, try to figure out some dates and next steps. We do have a building committee meeting tomorrow night. It's an in-person meeting at the middle school, and that is, so hopefully it'll be, it'll be the first time we'll have our whole team together, right? So it'll be the designers, OPM, and our building committee, so that'll be, that'll be good.
What time is it?
Meeting, I think, is at 6:30 it starts. We're going to get some, I think we're going to get some, I'll get some refreshments. I think Kelly ordered some for me, so I can bring that up around 6:00, so.
Okay.
So if you want some like cheese and crackers, come early. After that, there's a draft work plan in here. This is just a draft, and it even, let me see which version this is. I think we put two of them in here. Okay. So the first one is the revised one. This is talking about a lot of things that are coming up right now. So for example, I invited them to come to the tri-council meeting. Most of tri-council will be about next year's budget, but I figured another, you know, 10 or 15 minutes of sort of just letting people know what the visioning and design process might be. It might be a good way to, you know, with that group, with that audience, just inform another group. The, we'll be doing, shortly after that meeting, we'll be issuing questionnaires, staff questionnaire, student questionnaire, and community and public questionnaires. So we'll be pushing those out as best we can that week of the 23rd so that we can try, so the public and community and everyone can provide feedback on, you know, what they'd like to see in a building project, you know? Then those questionnaires will be created by the designer, so they'll let us, you know, they'll formulate their questions. Then we are going to have the, on February 3rd, that is a half-day, so what we're going to do is we're going to use the afternoon of that February 3rd to do a visioning session with the middle school faculty, so that the educational consultant will come down and be meeting with the middle school faculty. And they're going to come in the morning as well and do some student focus groups to talk to students from the middle school, so get some input, more detailed input from them. We are going to do a hybrid community visioning session right now. There's some dates on there. It looks like we're settling on, it hasn't been 100% finalized, it should be soon, Monday the 30th. So we're looking at Monday the 30th from 6:00 to 8:00. The idea would be a hybrid session, so you could come to the middle school in person, or you could participate through like a, probably a Microsoft Teams link or whatever they are going to provide, so that we can make it accessible to the community. So it's another opportunity. So there's kind of two, two main sessions, two main community outreach things here. One is the survey, if people just want to fill that in, the other is the, is this session. And then also on that afternoon meeting on the 3rd, I think you guys probably saw, I sent a memo out today, I think we CC'd you on it, but I sent a little memo out today to the finance committee and the Board of Selectment inviting to them, if they wanted to come to that one on the 3rd, they're welcome to do that. You guys are welcome to certainly to come to those as well if you can. And then, you know, just trying to keep people in the loop so that we don't have a lot of, you know, questions on what's going on. But I think, I think now we have the designer on board, we have the whole team together, this is going to start moving pretty fast. And then there's some other things on here, some detailed program meetings, we're working on scheduling for those, but those are things that'll just take place during the day. That's usually with everything else, you know, with, you know, they want to be art teachers or whatever, it's specific. It looks like we're probably going to try to take a vote on a grade configuration, a preferred grade configuration on February 13th at that school committee meeting. It'll just help us moving forward if we have a little more direction. We talked to the MSBA, we still have to kind of, we still have to do some due diligence on both ends, but if the school committee has said that they prefer one grade configuration over the other, basically the 4th grade or the 5 through 8, in between now and then, I'll get some information together about things like our student population or crowding at the, you know, what is our current capacity at the elementary school, possibilities for pre-K, that kind of stuff, and we'll do that on that night. And so then, there's another, there's an earlier draft of this that's kind of almost immediately after. You get one sort of, you get sort of the timeline version of that draft, and then you've got the other one. I kept the other one in because the other one, the other one was the first one we worked off of, and this one goes all the way out to show some of the other ideas. They're really looking to, you know, we're looking to get the different votes by certain times, you know, the local project funding authorization, the time, just so people can have a bigger picture of things. The June 2024 town meeting is when we'd hope to have by that point a preferred schematic design by the MSBA, and we would have had that for a while and be hoping to try to get a vote for funding. That's really the last major hurdle, is making sure we can get, you know, once we get that preferred schematic design, and then we can go ahead and get the, if we can get the funding approved, then we start rolling. They're anticipating if we vote, basically in June of 2024, by the time they do all the other bidding and everything else, it'll probably end up, construction will probably actually start in June of 2025, and they're looking at a projected, you know, move-in date for fall of 2027. So I know a lot of times people kind of want to know, you know, what's this, what's this look like in terms, you know, when would this actually happen and what would it be? So 2024 would be hopefully when we'd be voting, and then they'd be building between 2024 and 2027, hopefully opening the school year off in 2027 in whatever that is, renovation, ad reno, or new building, so. So that's where we are. Lots going on, like, so we have a meeting tomorrow, so I'll just, I know a couple of you are on that committee, so you'll be there, and we'll just do the best we can to keep everyone in the loop. Any questions on the MSBA stuff?
No, I would just say that, sitting in the meeting when we chose, I mean, there were three companies that did a really good job, but LPA that ultimately had won on the scorecard with the MSBA and our involvement, they were super impressive. Very well-prepared, had lots of good ideas, and just the way they presented the information was super progressive, in my opinion. So I'm really excited. I think they did a really good job.
Yeah, I think we got a good team working together, and it'd be good to get everyone together tomorrow. The next thing in your packet is the School Resource Officer, standard operating procedures. So these were revised. They've been in the works for a few years, and then they came up with, they finally came up with these. There wasn't a lot of, the state sort of issued it, so there's not a, there's not a whole lot of, you know, fill in the blanks. It was mostly, here's how your SROs should be working. So I know Paul Sylvester got them in a training he went to, ran them by Chief Coin, they ran them by me, so we both actually, we've signed them already just to say, yes, this is how we're going to operate, consistent with the, all the laws and that kind of stuff. So the, so I just, you know, pass that along, see if you guys have, if there's any questions on anything in it. It's pretty straightforward. I don't think we've really had anything, you know, since we've added the SRO, I think it's been, it's been a help to our administration, and I don't think we've really had any issues of anything being, you know, inappropriate or anything like that in those, in that relationship Nothing in your packet, but the next agenda item I had was the new CPS website. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, if you go over to the new website, I know that was something that, you know, sort of the marketing committee, but really with Chris and Christie, Kristin Hand and Kristy La Perle, you know, we kind of refreshed that, so it kind of opens now with more of the video, some drone footage. Should work a little, be more mobile-friendly, so if you open it on a mobile, things aren't getting cut off. And sort of some bigger boxes where you just sort of say, like, yeah, I want to go here or there. So I think it's a little cleaner, so, you know, I think the other website was great, but it's just, it's almost like things just kept getting added and added and added and added, and then it became more and more difficult to find stuff, so it was just good to do a refresh. So we'll continue. I'm sure there's some things that as we go, you know, we'll figure out that there's a link that's broken or something that didn't quite transfer right, so I'm sure that we'll be debugging for a little bit. I think there's actually still a little thing you can click on the top to provide feedback if you need to, if there's something that you find. But I think overall, I think it looks great, and I'm glad we were able to get up and running. I know, you know, we kind of put, we were sort of hoping it would go live at the beginning of the school year, but, you know, with Infinite Campus and everything, but getting it done by the first of the year, I still think it's great.
It's great. Looks really professional.
Next two topics here are for the 23-24 school year. The first one is a draft calendar. We don't need to vote on this at this time. All this is, is really, it's just kind of a calendar where we threw in some dates, you know, where you'd sort of just say, kind of traditionally, plug in the holidays, plug in where we start, sort of look at where our typical PD days are. There are no half-days built in here. We will add those probably in a later iteration. This is just to kind of get it kicked off. Like I said, we're not looking for a vote on this at this time. This is really just putting this out there for any type of feedback, whether that's feedback from the unions or feedback from the school committee or feedback from the public, if there's any questions or concerns regarding any of these essentially scheduled breaks. And, you know, the start and end date, the scheduled breaks. So this is just, like I said, it's just a draft. We'll get another iteration probably in a couple of meetings. It'll have probably the half-days kind of built in, and if we get any feedback, we can consider it. And then eventually we'll have you guys vote when it gets a little further on in the spring. But I like to get this out fairly early so that we can just sort of map it out, see what it looks like, and give, provide people an opportunity for feedback. The next page is, this is from our DBUS contract. This is our, we are actually, I remember last year I got a little confused on the years, but this is the option, we are going into option year one for next school year. So I don't know if we just wanted to, you know, I think, I think given the price of gas and inflation and everything, that, you know, I don't know, I forget the exact increase on the, on this option year, but it's reasonable, and I would suggest that I think the best we're going to get is to accept this option year rather than trying to go out to bid again. So if the school committee is comfortable with it, I'd accept, you know, maybe a motion just to go forward with option year one.
How many option years are there, Steve?
Two.
Just two?
So we can do, when we bid, we do a three-year bid, and then there are two option years that you're allowed to have. So we have option year one, and we can do option year two, and then we have to go back out to bid again.
So this takes effect in July of?
This will be for the next fiscal year, yep. But what it does is if we accept that now, because if we're not going to accept this, and I got to start opening up a bid process and then go through that whole process. If we're going to accept this, then I can let Dee know that, you know, we'd like to move forward with the option year, and then, and then we can just use this, these numbers when we're doing our budget.
I'll make the motion to accept the, opt in to the first option year.
Okay.
Second it.
Any discussion, any questions, comments?
So does this question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Does this, does DBUS manage all of the transportation that we have? I noticed that there, the cost for the vocational route buses and special education buses, do we, do we contract with another vendor in addition to DBUS for transportation?
Right now, we only use DBUS, but that's because we did a separate bid a few years ago for, specifically for special ed transportation, and DBUS won that as well.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay? But you don't have to, this bid is really just our busing, busing. We can do, we can either do a separate bid, or you don't, you're not actually required to bid for the special ed transportation, the van transportation. You are allowed just to sort of shop around on those.
Okay. What about like sports?
That's included in this. That's the athletics events and van busing, yep.
Steve, with the, I see two buses for ASB, is that still going to be, I mean, you're still going to need two every, where the numbers are falling off?
I'm not sure. That's a good point, but I think we would still need the bus, because even that Asabat bus, its list isn't Asabat bus, but it's, it does Asabat, then it comes back, and it still does the elementary route and that kind of stuff. So it's like if we, if we got rid of an Asabat route, that bus would still probably be doing like a middle school route, so they don't have to do, yeah.
All right. Any questions?
We still have our vans that?
Yep, we have two vans, using those, yep. Yep, those have been working out great.
Okay. All in favor?
All right, thank you. All right, the last thing is the CHS Program of Studies. Obviously, they're going to start their scheduling for next year pretty soon, so they routinely look through and make their changes each year. So these are updates to the 22-23 Program of Studies for next year. A lot of it is pretty, pretty straightforward. You can see the little cheat sheet. I know you got the whole Program of Studies as like a separate file. You know, a couple of courses that are deleted, some changes to the SAT subject tests, really that music technology is just sort of like a tweak of what electronic music used to be, and adding some more computer science classes. So I don't know if you have any questions, I could actually have Mr. Sirmak talk to you on those, if there's anything you'd like to discuss.
Looks like we don't want to talk to you. Don't take it personal. Not true. Just don't have any questions.
So I'd probably just ask if you guys could, I don't know how legally we need to do it, but if you wanted to make a motion to accept the changes, and then that way we're on board and they can start moving with it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Clinton High School Program of Studies as amended and presented to us this evening.
I will second that.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
All right. That's, that's my report. A couple of subcommittee things, I think, maybe, but.
Thanks, Steve. Some policy. Did, any of that, we'll start with curriculum week?
We haven't. I will probably try to schedule one in the coming weeks, you know, maybe in that March area, just to kind of go through and start looking at the curriculum review again. That's something we started trying to do right before COVID, and it was mentioned in that equity audit, so we should probably get together and look at that.
Safety, I know we talked about this.
We haven't scheduled one yet. We probably will. One note maybe for safety is, we have reached out, I think I have a meeting, is it the 18th with the AED? Yeah, so obviously following what everyone probably, a lot of people saw in the football game, one of the first questions you think about is like, what's the status of our AEDs? How would we handle that kind of stuff? So our AEDs are serviced every year, but we did set up a meeting to, for me to meet with the AED company and our sales rep just to see, because I know Amy Mason, the lead nurse, has brought up a couple of times that she was a little concerned about the age of them. So even though we get them maintained every year, so I just want to kind of meet with him and see where we are. So I'll probably try to schedule maybe a safety meeting right after that, so we can review any of their recommendations in case we want to build in, you know, purchasing of either new AEDs or maybe even additional portable AEDs or anything like that.
Do we offer training on those for our teachers? Like, people that are in the building, if an AED is there, do people know how to use it?
Yeah, so that was another thing we talked about.
Because if they don't know how to use it, it doesn't make any difference that it's there.
No, it's funny, most of them though, when you do the training, they try to make them as idiot-proof as possible. It's almost like you open it up and the guy, the guy starts talking to you, like, put this here and put that there, you know? But, but yeah, I mean, we should be doing, it's another thing we talked about, Amy and I talked about is, particularly if we get any type of newer models, when we bring those in, make a show we're doing trainings and getting that in, so people, so you're right, to your point, people feel comfortable with it, too.
Seconds make a difference, right? That's all we've heard this week as well, is just the timing of it all.
Marketing?
Yes. It looks like we're pulling.
It looks like we're pulling together a meeting for February 13th.
Yeah, right before the school committee meeting, yeah.
Policies, procedure?
That's, yeah. It's another one we got to schedule, we got some medical policies, yeah. We're building a stack, we'll get something on the books.
The silly is like, well, we meet tomorrow night, I think.
Yeah, pretty much.
I'll cover that. And nothing for negotiations, right?
No.
Perfect. I think on the old business. New business?
We do have, we do have in there to go into executive session just to give a quick discussion on strategy with respect to non-teaching personnel, not non, yeah, non-teaching personnel.
Okay. So under chapter 30, section 21 of Master and Law Meeting Law, the committee will enter an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to non-teaching personnel, the committee will not reconvene.
Matt Faracus, aye?
Aye. Pam Guy, aye?
Brendan Bailey, aye?
Thank you, everyone.